Good morning. Welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, August 12th. It's nice to see such a full chambers today. I like an interactive meeting. Please rise, parable, and recite the pledge allegiance with me.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am Vice Chair Kristi Joakim. To my right is Commissioner Sean Flaherty and Chelsea Johnson and to my left is Commissioner Matt Schulte. Clerk, would you please start the meeting?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on July 29th, 2025.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Joakim?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Motion carries. Item two, claims, two A, approval of the claims processed through August 8th, 2025, and I'll note there is an amendment for payroll.
I move approval of the claims processed through August 8th and putting them in payroll.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Joakim?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two B, approval of claims including billings for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided Nebraska Vice Statute 23-135 for Commonwealth Electric Company dated August 11th, 2025 for a total of $5,250 and Schaefer Communications dated August 11th, 2025 for a total of $1,361.46.
Move approval.
We have a motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Joakim?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Consent items, these are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion or consideration by Commissioner, by a member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts, C-22-0734 with Centas Corporation for the rental, cleaning of mats and various lending and related items, C-21-0318 with Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless for wireless communication services and equipment, C-24-0745 with JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for on-call services associated with wetland delineation, C-24-0940 with Genesis Contracting Group LLC for construction services at Square One Family Resources Center, C-14-0614 with Executive Answering Service to provide telephone answering services, C-20-0579 with NCIC Inmate Communications Incorporated for inmate phone services, C-25-0045 with the Asian Community and Cultural Center for the Childcare Assistance Program to extend through the contract term, C-24-0784 with Superstream for carpet and upholstery cleaning, C-21-0724 with Vigilant Solutions LLC for mobile license plate reader software and system licenses, B, right away contracts with the following, Roger and Cheryl Kaputzka Sawtilla Road Improvement in the total amount of $21,975, Scott and Jay Lynn Huerman Sawtilla Road Improvement for the total amount of $24,400, Todd Gregg Northwest 19th Street and Winst Branch Oak Road in the total amount of $6,917.50, Lancaster County South 40th Street and Sawtilla Road in the total amount of $23,900, Charles and Alice Mizurtski Sawtilla Road Improvement in the amount of $9,500, Barry and Karen Raedba Sawtilla Road Improvement in total amount of $46,000, Matthew and Jessica Wolf Sawtilla Road Improvement in the total amount of $43,225, change order two to county contract C-25-0226 with straight line striping incorporated to add 0.53 miles to the project for an additional $907.36, grant contracts with the following, the Food Fort for the site programming program in the amount of $8,000, YWCA Lincoln for Catch Life Skills Program in the amount of $12,500, YWCA Lincoln for the Girl Circle Program in the amount of $20,000, Girl Scout Spirit of Nebraska for the Juvenile Justice Outreach Program in the amount of $20,000, the Hub Central Access Point for the Young Adults for the Back on Track Program in the amount of $11,372, the Hub Central Access Point for Young Adults for the Volunteer Coordination Program in the amount of $8,860, Clyde Malone Community Center for the Leadership Academy Program in the amount of $26,000, Mentoring Plus for the Sports in the Courts Mentoring Through Athletics Program in the amount of $10,000, YMCA of Lincoln for the Teen Night Teen Time at Northeast YMCA Program in the amount of $10,000, grant contracts with the following, Houses of Hope for the Transitional Residence Substance Abuse Use Halfway House Program in the amount of $50,104.35, League of Human Dignity for the Center for Independent Living Program in the amount of $37,072.95, NAMI Nebraska for the Family Support and Peer Support Program in the amount of $31,050, F, a grant contract with the Asian Community and Cultural Center for the Serving Refugee and Other Migrant Youth Program in the amount of $92,000, G, grant contracts with the following, the Asian Community and Cultural Center for the Wraparound Services for Refugee and Immigrant Youth Programming in the amount of $71,825, Family Service Lincoln for the School-Based Therapeutic Services Program in the amount of $75,000, Hope Spoke for the Diversion Evaluations Program in the amount of $4,698, the Clyde Malone Community Center for the Take Pause Program in the amount of $45,000, YWCA Lincoln for the Catch Skills Program in the amount of $45,000, H, receive and place and file the following reports, Clerk of the District Court, Records Management, Assessor Registered Deeds, County Clerk, and the 2025 Annual Inventory of County Real Property, then I, setting public hearings in Room 112 of the County City Building, the first August 19th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. regarding text amendment 25009 to amend the following provisions of the Lancaster County Zoning Regulations, Article II to add a definition for battery energy storage system, Article IV to add a battery storage system, allowable use on the AG's district by special permit, and Article 13 by adding a new special permit with conditions, August 26th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. regarding institution of eminent domain proceedings against I-Rent LLC, and August 26th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. regarding an amendment to Lancaster County General Assistance Guidelines.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Joakim?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item four, new business, four A, proclaiming August 15th, 2025 as Barney Day.
We'd like to ask Barney to please come forward at this time.
Commissioners, I do have the proclamation to read into the record.
Thank you.
Proclamation, before the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, in the matter of proclaiming August 15th, 2025 as Barney Day in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, whereas on August 15th, 2025 Barney, the beloved therapy dog of Lancaster County celebrates his fourth birthday, and whereas Barney continues to offer unwavering support and friendship to those in need, brightening even the roughest days, whereas his fame has reached beyond county lines with appearances in the Lincoln Journal Star, Omaha World Herald, Grand Island Independent, Carney Hub, and 10/11 News, earning him the title of local and regional celebrity, and whereas we honor a remarkable dog whose kindness, calming energy, and loving presence continues to brighten lives across our community, now therefore, as the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, hereby proclaim August 15th, 2025 as Barney Day in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska. A witness thereof, we have here and to sign on August 12th, 2025, by the Board of County Commissioners in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska.
Good morning. I'm Leslie Arons. I'm Barney's primary handler. I'm going to ask his other handlers who are here to come up, Carla and Sage, if you don't mind. Barney spends a lot of time with each of us, and as you can tell, he's a big fan of all of his friends, but we want to thank you for your continued support of Barney every day and all of the positive work that he does for the county and the city, and we're very fortunate to have him, and it just wouldn't be possible without you guys. Do you guys want to add anything?
No.
No.
Well, I want, well, it's important for us to recognize Barney today, and I'm glad we have this opportunity to do so. I want to thank all of you as well, because you're taking on the responsibility for Barney, getting Barney where he needs to be in the building with the people he needs to be with, in addition to your other job, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's a great program. Thank you.
Yes. We're very fortunate.
Okay, Barney.
We ran this dog for office at win with an 89% mandate.
Well, I'm also thinking that many of the people in the chambers today are here to see Barney and not us.
There's no doubt. He's certainly the most popular person here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will be glad to sign this proclamation.
So, did we do a motion? Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Joakim?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Motion carries. For B, a special events permit application from Jason Strobin with Good Life Adventures LLC for the Gravel Worlds Bike and Race Running Expo Event on August 21st through 23rd, 2025.
Hello again. It's another year. Thank you guys so much for meeting with us again. Lot of really big updates this year, really exciting growth and just exposure globally. So, this year, this is year 16 for Gravel Worlds. So, a lot of history right here in Lincoln. We have currently 47 states, 20 countries, and all six inhabited continents, so that's a huge number for us for international exposure. If you know anyone from Antarctica, let us know. We'll take all seven continents, but another big update for us this year, we just, last week, got our official 501(c)(3) status for the new Gravel Worlds Foundation, so we have a nonprofit wing of our race, and through the foundation, we've already committed $100,000 to donations for this year, and hopefully that's just the start. Couple also shout-outs. Thank you so much to the Lancaster County Engineers. We are actually for added safety in the county, we're closing Havelock Road all the way to the county line, so the first seven-ish miles of the race and the last seven miles of the race will be completely closed to traffic outside of locals, so added safety for our participants out there, and Lancaster Engineers helped out a lot with that, as well as the Lancaster County Sheriffs who will be at the highway crossings in Lancaster, keeping our participants safe. So, yeah, we're very thankful for another really big year out at the Lancaster Event Center again, so we moved out there. That was a great move. We're really thankful for that facility out there and all the growth that's happening just at that facility, so hopefully we don't have weather like the county fair this last weekend, but we'll get through it if we need to, but yeah, it's good to have a great supportive community here in Lincoln and Lancaster, and for the first time, we are going east, so we're going to new townships and new counties, going to the Arbor Day Lodge in Nebraska City as one of our checkpoints, as well as the community of Weeping Water, so showing off a little bit more new Nebraska. And then on Sunday, which is new for us, we have the Gravel Worlds Triathlon out at Branched Oak Lake, and that we've partnered with USA Triathlon, that will actually be an official gravel national championships for USA Triathlon, so that's another couple hundred people that will be experiencing Branched Oak and a little bit of Seward County over there, so, and Lancaster Engineers helped us get into Seward County safely for that, too, so yeah, thank you so much to our community for year 16.
It's a great event.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So. Well, I'm kind of sad that it's moving from northwest Lancaster County. I'm glad you're doing the triathlon there. No, the moving to the event center and going east gives the riders a different opportunity, but also allows you more space to work in, so that's good.
That was a fun event. Looks like, did you guys get a new sponsor this year?
Yeah, we have Lauf, which is a bike company. They've actually been with us since 2016, so we still have Garmin. Garmin's still a big sponsor of ours, but our bike company wanted to outbid them this year, so we're thankful to have a really cool company out of Iceland, and they have a facility in Virginia that where they make their bikes, so really good company, really good people, and we still have a great relationship with Garmin, and they'll be up here. They're actually based in Kansas City, so yeah, we're excited to have them, but yeah, new brand, new branding, all that stuff, so.
Great.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Joakim?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
For C, special designated license applications from Fucor Incorporated for Feast on the Farm Event on August 23rd, 2024 at Prairie Pines Nature Preserve.
Good morning. Good to see you again. My name's Eric Meisel with Fucor Inc., and this will be our fifth or sixth year providing libations for Feast on the Farm at Prairie Pines Nature Reserve, a bunch of local farmers, local ingredients, local chefs, providing a great day of food and fun for the community.
I have never been, but this is always one I want to go to. It's just never worked out.
Yeah.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Joakim?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
For D, a special designated license application from Messiah Lutheran Foundation for a festival on October 11th, 2025 at Messiah Lutheran Church.
Doesn't appear there's anyone here to speak on this.
We all, we were all given.
Yes, we do have a letter that's linked in the agenda.
Yeah. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Joakim?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four E, I have a note to hold it from the county attorneys. We'll move to item four F, a resolution in the matter of the 2025-2026 annual cost of living wage adjustment for unrepresented classified county employees, attorneys ones and twos, supervising attorneys, district court staff attorneys, law clerks, emergency man, pardon me, emergency management specialist, emergency management training specialist, deputy sheriff captains, and psychologists.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Joakim?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Motion carries. For G, reappointments to the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission for the term of August 24th, 2025 through August 24th, 2031. They are for Christy Joy, Cindy Reiman-Yost, and Lorenz Abell Jr.
They're all great nominees. I think we're lucky to have them. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Joakim?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries. For H, recommendation from the Personal Policy Board to revise the classification of clerk typist three.
Good morning. Bird Mac McIntyre, Human Resources. This is just modernizing the classification and reflecting the duties that have changed over time, not changing the pay line or anything like that, just making it a reflection of what the position's doing today.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Please call the
roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Joakim?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. For I, agreement with Zell Human Resource Solutions to provide recommendations to the county board regarding the setting of salaries of elected officials pursuant to Nebraska Vice Statute 23-1114. The cost is $3,500.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Joakim?
Yes.
Motion carries. For J, agreement with the Administrative Office of the Courts in Probation for the transition of the County Adult Drug Court to being wholly administered, operated, and funded by the AOCP, including transfer of staff.
I don't know how you did this in like four months. Good job. Good work.
Morning Commissioners. Jeff Kapautic, Community Corrections.
Good morning. Adam Jorgensen with the Administrative Office of Courts in Probation. What you have for consideration is the agreement to transition the operation of the Lancaster County Adult Drug Court to be operated and funded by the Administrative Office of the Courts in Probation. Jeff and I and many others have worked very collaboratively to put this together on a pretty short timeframe, and so just here to answer any questions and...
When you first came to us, I know that there were some questions and concerns that were raised from just folks in the public. Could you maybe just do a brief summary of some of those concerns and how you address them?
Go ahead. Okay. So, just a little bit about the agreement. I think a lot of the concerns were ensuring that there was no disruption in treatment or any disruption for any of the participants that are currently in the program, and so the contract spells out that individuals will stay in the same treatment by the same treatment provider. We worked to ensure that staff were taken care of as well. All county staff were offered the opportunity to come over and be a part of the Administrative Office of Courts. Three of the five that were employed by the county did come over. There was a desire to ensure that matrix treatment was also kept in place. Those individuals who are currently doing treatment through Lancaster Community Corrections will continue to do matrix through Community Corrections. We've worked with registered service providers in the community so that we do have a treatment provider that does do matrix, and those individuals that are new to the programs are now going to that provider. And then resources, upon the agreement being signed, they will have the same staff that they currently have right now with some additional staff that will be coming over, and then the county clerk is also available to help during the transition period as part of this agreement for a dedicated amount of time for us, for a period of time.
Right. The goal is to make sure it's seamless for everyone involved, and we'll be working with the state to transition. Also, we'll continue to manage the grants until those expire to ensure there's continued sober housing and the heat program and that in place.
I think it's a positive change. It opens up good operational capacity in your shop.
Yes.
And I think kind of streamlines the whole process. I'm for this.
I do have mixed feelings about this because we had so much pride in this program, and I'm relieved to know that things will be, continue to move forward in the same kind of capacity. You're absolutely right. It is the right move to make, but it's been such an important program for the county.
And we're not losing it.
That's right.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Joakim?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that brings us to four K, an agreement with Unity Inspired LLC to perform mental health and substance abuse evaluations to provide substance abuse education and other clinical services to inmates at the county jail. The total annual expenditure is not to exceed $120,240.
Good morning. Maria Hatfield, Administrator Corrections. Unity Inspired has played an integral role in our Mr. and Wiser Program. They've stepped up in covered classes when we had some vacant positions, and they're currently covering for an expired contract with, that we had with Marisol to cover those classes, and then they're going to expand services for the individuals that go through the graduate program upon completion of the Wiser and Mr. Program to work with reentry services, so.
Very good. Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Joakim?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
For L, federal equitable sharing agreement and annual certification report for the county sheriff regarding sharing of activity of drug forfeiture funds for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Joakim?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. For M, a series of interlocal agreements for the provision of a school resource officer by county sheriff for School District 145 Malcolm, School District 160 Norris, School District 161 Raymond Central, and School District 145 Waverly.
Good morning. Terry Whiter, Lancaster County Sheriff. This is just a continuation of a program that we've been on for a number of years, so we have a deputy assigned to Norris, a deputy assigned to Waverly, and a deputy assigned to both Malcolm and Raymond Central. They kind of split their time there, so, and then we worked out a payment agreement so that when the deputies aren't in their schools, we can use them for other duties as needed, so it's really been a very beneficial program.
Excellent.
I'd just say a couple things. First of all, I think school resource officers are great. They create a great opportunity for deterrence and safety. It gives a potential for quick response, which is rarely used out there, great relationship building with the students as well. When I was on the school board, there's a lot of concern about SROs in schools leading to... on the school board, there's a lot of concern about SROs in schools leading to higher arrest rates, but that has not proven to be true for sure in the county. A lot of, there, there were times, there were for sure studies that showed that, but they were inner-city schools where they literally put booking offices inside the schools, and that's clearly not what we've got going on here.
Um, yeah, you know, we, there's a pretty clear delineation between violation of school policy and school taking disciplinary action versus a law violation that we might become involved in. So yeah, it is, it uh, you've got to make that, make that cut like that.
Yeah. So appreciate it. Uh, we don't have, do we have a motion yet?
No.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. For N, agreement with Cubert Appraisal Group for appraisal services related to the condemnation proceedings on property generally located at seventeen forty N Street, Lincoln. Cost is not to exceed three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Motion carries. For O, uh, agreement with RL Keith Consultant Incorporated for professional appraisal and review services. The cost is not to exceed three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Good morning, Dalton Hofer with Lancaster County Engineering. Uh, Northwest fifty-sixth Street, I-82 Holders Street is a federal aid project, uh, and that requires us to have an appraiser and review appraiser. Uh, Richard Keith has worked with us in the past, so we're going to go use him for this project.
Glad to see this moving forward.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries. For P, uh, contract with JMN Construction LLC to replace structures G one fourteen, G two twenty-six, G one fifteen, and G two two-two at a cost not to exceed three million, seventy-five thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Good morning, Larry Legg with Lancaster County Engineering. Um, this is the bridge replacement on North Ninety-eighth Street. Um, it's the, the last piece. As soon as we execute this, um, we'll give notice to proceed, and they'll start construction on the eighteenth. Uh, would expect, depending on the winter we have, that uh, construction should be completed in the, the spring or early summer is kind of the expectation. But do you know Nebraska weather? Any questions?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Vesta isn't here for this one. I know this is a, a big deal to him and his district. Um, this is a really heavy lift. Good job getting this out.
It, Pam tells me it's the largest structure that we've let in Lancaster County. So it'll be great to see it get done. Yeah, this is, this is exciting.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. For Q, uh, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of county engineer toward execute a purchase order to Rose Equipment Incorporated for one heated rubberized asphalt crack sealing machine in the amount of sixty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars.
Good morning, Oak Williams on behalf of Lancaster County Engineering Department.
And I'm Chris Meyer, Road Superintendent for Lancaster County Engineering.
Flip it around. Perfect.
Uh, this is ultimately replacing a current uh, heated rubberized asphalt crack sealing machine. It's just lived its life, and we're looking to upgrade it for a newer model.
Looks pretty fancy.
Hot.
Yeah.
Approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Uh, Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. For R, uh, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer toward execute a purchase order to Monroe Truck Equipment Incorporated for five combo unit hydraulic material spreaders with plows, lights, and spill shield kits in the amount of five hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
This is also upside down for us.
Excuse me?
Probably correct for you.
There you go.
That's better. Thank you.
These pieces of equipment are added, being added to our fleet uh, for I guess, snow removal purposes.
So these are additions, not replacements?
Correct.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Motion carries. For S, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to execute purchase agreements to Anderson Ford for four two thousand and twenty-five or newer Ford F-three-fifty super cab trucks in the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty, excuse me, five hundred and eighty-four dollars, and four two thousand and twenty-five or newer Ford F-two-fifty eight-foot crew cab trucks in the amount of two hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars.
These trucks will be replacing uh, current vehicles that have lived their life.
I'd move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries. And for T, recommendations from purchasing agent on behalf of county engineer to execute purchase orders to Nebraska Machinery Company Incorporated for one CAT one forty motor grader in the amount of three hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents, and one CAT one forty motor grader in the amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents.
They're actually bigger than this, but this is to replace a, existing models that have also lived their life.
I assume the price difference is the trade-in value of the other.
Correct.
I'd move approval. Second, you beat me to the joke.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. For U, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to execute a purchase order to Nebraska machinery company incorporated slash Trail King Industries for one Trail King steel side dump trailer in the amount of eighty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to four V, a grant contract with the city of Lincoln in the amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars from the Visitors Improvement Fund for improvements at the Pinewood Bowl in Pioneer's Park.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Uh, Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Motion carries. For W, grant contract with the Mediation Center for the Restorative Justice Practices Program in the amount of fifteen thousand and ninety dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries. For X, grant contract with the Mediation Center for the Restorative Justice Program in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. For Y, grant contract with the Indian Center for Great Plains Youth Development Program in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
I will abstain.
Motion carries. For Z, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the Assessor Register of Deeds Office to award a contract to Ersey Canada Limited for mass appraisal software replacement in the total amount of two million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars.
We have three responses to the RFP, and this is the one that's, that scored the highest.
We've been talking about this for quite some time and, and saving up some funds for this. I do have a couple of questions on the contract. First off, throughout it, it says city and not county, but this organization, this company does deal with counties correctly, correct?
Correct.
Um, because certainly we want to make sure that we're getting a, a product that fits, and I trust through your system, you have done that. Um, the other one is, this is SRE Canada, and I'm concerned, will we get into any challenges, given we don't know where tariffs and things like that are, what further developments might happen there?
I don't think we know that at this point.
Yeah. It does concern me a bit.
How, do we need any changes to the contract because it says city and not county on it?
At this time, we would suggest that probably not, um, since it's going to be used both for,